Plane mode, please. All right, this is the informal work session, public comments. Uh, Larry Smith, if you'll come up to the microphone, please.
Yes, um, County Road 387. What got me curious about it lately was that Timber Company came down there and started clear cutting. And that road has a bridge across it and the sign says Bridge Out. But they, during the time they was clear cutting that, they had a lot of log trucks going up and down that road. And I'm assuming that they crossed that bridge to get to the timber on the other side of that. Uh, is that road closed?
Well. Well, I didn't find anywhere where the commission had voted to close it in two, two. Well, what I. What, uh, I don't know how they could have closed it because he owns property on the road and he didn't sign a petition. And his brother-in-law owns ro- property on the road.
My brother-in-law.
Yeah, Robert owns property on the road. And he told me way back when I got to looking into it, probably three and a half years ago, that he didn't ever sign a petition. And I didn't find where they had, had a public hearing and did all the stuff to close it. Okay, so you want us to look into it, see if it was legal. Well, we can do that.
Would you do that?
We can get our engineer to check into it and see if it was closed properly.
Okay.
If that's what you want. It's wishes, we'll put a resolution up tomorrow night and ask you to do that.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, Gerald, I understand you're taking care of sheriff stuff tonight, come on, let.
Uh, we'd like to reclassify Kara Morgan as a deputy sheriff.
Is that Morgan or Moran?
Moran, sorry about that.
All right.
Uh, wage adjustments for employees. Should have the attachment there.
And that's per the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, would like for you to sign the Southern Health Partners Agreement.
Okay.
And annual bids.
Uh, anybody got any questions on any of that? Okay, we'll handle that tomorrow night?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, Revenue Commissioner, Tim Little.
Thank y'all. I'm here with a request for a new hire that's in the Collectors, uh, Department. This is a vacancy we've had for a while and money's in the budget for it. Just y'all have the name or do I need to present it or y'all should have that part of it.
Yeah, you got Ashley Minor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if possible.
That effective date's on the new budget year anyway, huh?
Yeah, October the first, yeah.
Yep.
Y'all got any questions for me?
Yes, sir.
No, sir, you're, you can be dismissed if that's what you want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
You gonna stink a rain?
All right, Probate Judge, Jason Calhoun.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Chairman, again, thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda tonight. I'll be real quick, I'm asking for a resolution to approve, uh, salary adjustments in the probate department as presented, uh, in your handout. This is a part of the, the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, budget that we had and, uh, and that's it, that's all I've got.
Yeah, I don't think you or I either one had much of a chance if we didn't want them women on our head.
Yeah, that, that, when I, when I learned this, first thing this morning, that my email, I didn't send my email. And then I spoke with the office, I was like, this is, this is not starting out very good today. After a lot of begging and promising, uh, I was allowed to be on the agenda.
And I didn't, I didn't have any fun with you either this morning.
And I'm thankful for that and, and my staff is very thankful for that.
All right, thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commission Office, Ms. Sylvia Singleton.
Uh, the first thing will be the, uh, annual bids. The only one we had was for janitorial supplies and the, we only received one bid and that was from, um, Alabama Paper and Supply. So I'll be asking, uh, that we receive it and accept it.
Okay.
Uh, the next three items are for, uh, animal control. Um, would like to ask that we surplus some old dog houses and the contents of an old storage building that's there at Animal Control.
Okay, any questions on either of those, okay?
Um, would like to have a continuous open position for animal control specialist.
Okay, and what this is, is kinda like the road department though, it's just open and they can pull from a pool.
Yeah, I thought they already had it, anyway.
It's the, it's the old tech one position.
I got you.
And of course, uh, to remove, uh, an employee from the payroll effective September nineteenth.
Okay.
Um, in your packet, um, I had put the, uh, long-term juvenile detention subsidy contract. I'll be asking, uh, if you will, to approve that, um, and for the chairman to sign it. The twenty, uh, five, twenty-six meeting calendar, uh, you have, um, there is a conflict, uh, the week of March tenth. And I would like to ask that we move, uh, the March tenth meeting to the seventeenth and the March twenty-fourth meeting to the thirty-first. And that would still give us two weeks before the first meeting in April. So the schedule I've put in there that you've looked at, uh, could we just change it with those two, uh, meeting dates?
Anybody have any question or issues with that?
Great.
Okay.
Great. Uh, the next is our favorite, it's our holiday, uh, dates. Um, and these, of course, run along the state holidays, we always check those. I did check with the, um, uh, district and, um, the other one, Circuit Court, thank you. I did check with them to see if we had any conflicts here. The only one that might have been a conflict would be the day after Christmas, but as a general rule, upstairs is closed the week of Christmas. They have a copy of this, they saw no other issue.
Anybody got any questions on the calendar? All right.
Okay, the next, uh, on the list, intra-fund transfers, we, uh, you know, as a rule, we ask for this at the end of each fiscal year so that we can kinda even out our funds. Uh, these are not transfers between funds, this is transfer within the fund, uh, to dress it up and get it ready for our financial statements. Um, so I'll be asking if you'll approve those transfers for us. Um, uh, approve to pay the claims that are due, we have a claims list in there, but there'll be some that'll come up that are due uh, with, uh, invoicing, uh, that we had to have in so that we wouldn't have a lot of accruals to carry over. Uh, I'll be asking if you will, uh, approve to pay the claims that are due by September thirtieth.
Any questions on that? Okay.
There are two accounts that I would like to move to the, um, to a money market sweep account with First Bank of Alabama at two and a half percent, and that would be the industrial development and the capital improvements.
Okay.
Uh, the transit budget, um, the transit budget had, um, uh, budgeted previous, for this current fiscal year, when the budget was done last year, there was a, uh, a high number for, uh, expected transit fees. And of course, it's, the fees were nothing, uh, nothing compared to the amount that, uh, we wanted to, uh, that we, we actually received. So in your sheet that had the budget amendments, the first two is a transfer out of the general fund. And we had to, we had to actually increase the budget, so that's the reason we have to amend it. Uh, the next, um, eight or ten that come out of two forty, those are just, um, where we transferred the money out of general into the transit to cover those, uh, expenses and then amended the expenses to reflect that.
All right, any questions on transfers? Okay.
Um, at the end of a fiscal year, once we've determined what our fund balances are, we are allowed to remove, um, uh, fund balance to general fund from BRB. Um, at, at this particular point, we'd like to move, um, one million to cover the end of the year expenses so that we can, um, finish the fiscal year and then, uh, amend the budget to accommodate this change.
Okay, any questions? All right.
I believe that's all.
All right. EMA, Nick Walton.
Good evening.
Hello, Nick.
Uh, so we're just here from EMA to do some salary adjustments, um, an increase for the director's position and then we want to reclassify Kobe to a full-time employee.
It's in the budget.
Yes, it's in the budget and all of, uh.
Was this in the new, was this in the upcoming budget?
Hmm.
So is the effective date, when's the effective date on it?
October eleventh.
Okay.
And that's because of the pay period, that if we would go, we could go October one, but it'd be like in the middle of the week and it'd be a headache on Terry.
I was just making sure it wasn't far enough into the new budget.
We usually ask that they do it at the beginning of a pay period, it just makes accounting a little simpler.
Gotcha, takes some headache off the people that.
And also your certification.
That's correct, yeah, that's where, that's where my increase is coming from. I got, um, a certified local emergency manager's, uh, certification, it's about two hundred hours of coursework, so.
Congratulations.
And that comes with a grant that reimburses for the, for the work, so.
Yeah.
We need to get you a new name badge.
Yeah.
No, it's just something everybody gets, but yeah. No change in the title.
Well, congratulations on that hit.
All right.
All right. Uh, Transit, Kiantay.
Good evening, everyone. Um, first off, I want to, uh, that first item on the agenda, I'm gonna put that off to a later time and I'll revisit that, uh, at a later moment.
Okay.
Uh, but picking up, I'd like to remove, uh, Vanessa Shields, uh, from my payroll effective September the eighteenth of twenty-twenty-five. And with that removal, I want to go ahead and advertise and field, uh, Transit Operator One, so go ahead and get that in and.
All right, anybody got any questions for Kiantay on that? All right, good job.
Yeah, while he's up here, he's doing a, a great job and communicating very effectively and utilizing his resources well.
Trying to, trying to, thank y'all.
Appreciate what you're doing.
All right. Mr. Donald Ziles, Porkson Ray.
Good evening, I'm just asking for new hire, Tonya Mims as a full-time caretaker. Uh, fact, it's September twenty-fourth at the pay rate on the attachment.
Temporary hire. Temporary new hire.
Mm-hmm, he got ours.
It says temporary on mine.
Well, the, begin with it says temporary, but at the other end it says it's full-time.
Okay.
Oh, I'm looking at the, uh.
It's a temporary position. He's just hired a temporarily, but at a full-time.
Yeah.
Got you.
Not a part-time, so it's temporary, full-time.
Yeah, he put it on the classification sheet, so.
Yeah.
Better hear.
I got you.
She's full, I mean.
She's full-time.
But it's on temporary.
Temporary, yeah, after a certain amount of days, you can move them to full-time, you can hire them, but.
Yeah, she had to go through the process and be hired into that job, that's full-time, yeah.
I was thinking we was going ahead and hire her full-time because we interviewed and everything.
Oh, it's full-time.
It's full-time on your classification.
Temporary hire.
See, uh, benefits, so if you're.
What, what tier? All right, you've already done the interview process?
We've done an interview.
She's the one you want to hire, but this would not be, it's just be a new hire.
Has that posting closed, that full-time position?
No, we, we run a, we run an open posting.
Okay, then, I mean, I, unless there's.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just, I'm just reading what it says.
She would be hired.
We began with what it was, just being, we began with it and thinking we was gonna have time to interview.
Yeah.
So I was gonna do it as a temporary hire, but then, Mr. Cherry, we had time to interview, so we interviewed and then we said.
So the process for hiring has been accomplished, so we're, we're gonna remove the temporary, she's gonna be a new hire as a full-time caretaker CSR.
That's right.
Okay, all right, everybody clear as?
Got you, clear as mood.
All right, thank you, Don. All right, Heath Sexton, County Engineer.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, glad to be here tonight. Um, I'd like to first start off with a, uh, position fill request, uh, for Mr. Cleveland Brown as shown attachment for the position and pay rate, uh, effective date.
Okay, any questions on that? All right.
Uh, next up, uh, annual bids and, uh, like other departments, the road department has, takes, uh, annual bids for most of the, for materials. And I'll pass, uh, these out, I think we got eight this year.
There's gonna be all of them, we're gonna have, we got another batch coming.
First annual bid, uh, was bid twenty-six zero zero three A, and that is for gasoline delivered to the road departments. Uh, I'm gonna ask that we accept the three bids, um, that we received from Campbell Oil Company, WH Thomas Oil Company and Petroleum Traders Corporation.
Now, you on gas or diesel?
He's on gas.
Gas.
Okay, staple, stapling in the wrong order.
Oh, you know what, I've got the, uh, at the, uh, I do need to change that to gasoline on, right here on the description right there.
I need to ask a question on this top sheet.
What bid number are you talking about?
Twenty-six oh four, I thought.
Well, the first one should be.
Three A.
Oh, oh, three A?
Yeah, oh, oh, three A, diesel fuel.
Well, it's actually. You know what, maybe you're right.
Yeah, twenty-six oh three A is.
Top sheet we have is twenty-six double oh three A.
Yep, diesel fuel, diesel fuel delivered to the road department, correct.
Yeah, that's what I said.
We had three bids, um, Campbell Oil Company, WH Thomas Oil and Petroleum Traders. We had.
This is out of order then, I'm not, I'm not following.
No, let's write one, get this one.
Oh, Petroleum Traders, okay, and would you, is that?
Is that a mistake?
Point zero one versus point one. That's correct. Really?
They'd have to get.
One point six cents.
This has to do with a, uh, margin over opus.
I got you, yeah, this is bidding by the margin.
By the margin, yes, so it's not, uh, basically.
Yeah.
Uh, when they get fuel in Montgomery, there is a certain amount for each different variety and then they average them up, come for the rack average. And this would be the amount over, and actually the lowest bid would be actually a little below from Petroleum Traders Corporation. Um, that's shown on the, uh, on the handout there.
I got you.
Now, they did, um.
Well, Heath, I got a question, it's only if they get both of them.
Yes, and I did, uh, so they submitted two bids.
That's the top one.
They submitted a bid for the, uh, twenty-six zero zero three A and they submitted a bid on the, uh, third page, twenty-six zero zero four for the gasoline.
So is this.
Well, they're higher, okay, Petroleum Traders is higher on the gasoline by seven hundredths of a cent than they are than is Campbell Oil Company.
Hmm, I don't think that's correct.
He comparing the third and first page.
Point zero three one nine, point zero three eight two.
And they're both negative, so the negative would be.
It's in a negative?
That's a negative margin.
Yeah, you can't see.
So that would be a negative.
I wish I knew how they figured this.
They're getting a rebate somewhere.
There gotta be.
I mean, as long as we get what we need to run the road department.
Who you got now?
Well, last year, there was only one bidder last year.
You, you used him before?
I think this is the only time anybody but Thomas Oil has submitted a bid.
This company, uh, Petroleum Traders has most of the state bid. And so, um, basically their bid was kinda like we were using with our current vendor, is that we order gasoline diesel. We don't have enough of each product to order a full tanker load. However, we've been able to order tanker loads that are split between gasoline and diesel. And, uh, uh, Petroleum Traders provided us that option with this bid. And I've reached out to county attorney and he said that basically the purpose of these bids is to, uh, to get the best rate that's in the county's best interest. So, um, with that, we're able to go with the, uh, with those options, so for that bid.
Their delivery schedule, is it, is it, I know you've considered this, but is it less or more, are you, are we having to do calisthenics to, to get these prices or?
No, it's the specifications have a certain delivery requirement, I think it's two days.
Most of these fuel, fuel companies, they have contract trucks, so they probably will have trouble getting a truck. For anybody who puts an order in through them.
That's a significant.
Yeah, it's a very significant difference. Well, we don't have any choice at that rate then, but take a lower bid.
Uh, would like to put it in the, um, minutes that basically, uh, uh, the combined, using the, uh, both bids to Petroleum Traders at the combined rate that's in the county's best interest.
Okay.
Next up was the, uh, bulk drop fuel point. This is basically where our, um, fuel truck that's two thousand, has a two thousand gallon tank can go and quickly get fueled up. And, uh, one, only one bidder, WH Thomas Oil Company, uh, at the rate shown on the, uh, that handout. Of course, we just talked about twenty-six zero zero four for the gasoline delivered, same thing as far as, uh, three bidders, Campbell Oil Company, WH Thomas Oil and Petroleum Traders. Next up's gonna be the plant mix option A, these are for any plants that are within a thirty mile radius of the road department. Only one bidder done construction at the Longview Plant. Next up's gonna be the option B, this is between thirty and sixty miles away from the, uh, road department. And only one bidder, and that's Asphalt Contractors for their plant on North McDonough Street, Montgomery. Next up's gonna be the HDPE pipe, of course, this is a, this is the type of pipe that we normally put under driveway, driveway turnouts. Um, we've got, uh, the first table is for pipe that's delivered to the county. And the second table is for, um, pipe that can be picked up inside the, the county limits. Three bidders, Ferguson, J, J and G Cooperts and Southern Pipe. Um, fortunately, the locations for Ferguson and J and G were not with, inside the city, inside the county limits, so they were disqualified. Uh, but I would request a award, awarding the, uh, each, um, each size and, and delivery method as shown. Next up is our, uh, aggregates that we pick up at the plant. We had four bidders for the each different size Vulcan, RM USA, Little River Materials and APAC. And they also had to provide their location of their plant. And, uh, um, various bidders were the, uh, they're all, I would request we accept the bids from all the, all four vendors. And that, um, we award each size to the lowest vendor as highlighted.
Okay.
The next up's gonna be, um, reinforced concrete pipe, um, for the different sizes. We also added arch pipe this time, this year. And, uh, we have two different options, one is for us to pick it up in a location inside Chilton County. And the other is for it to be delivered to us. There were two bidders, Foley Products Company and Ferguson Waterworks. Um, unfortunately, the Ferguson Waterworks location was not inside the county, so it's disqualified. But they, uh, I would, uh, recommend that we, uh, award the lowest bid for each size and delivery type as highlighted.
Okay. Looks good, good job, Heath, any questions, anybody on the bids?
All right, and next up. This project updates, of course, uh, the County Road twenty-three FDR Project is, um, I think the contractor started white, uh, putting the wearing surface on, I think, I can't remember if it's Wednesday or Thursday last week, and they're still working on that. Probably two or three more days. And then, of course, they'll wait a couple of weeks before they do the striping and the pavement markers, the permanent anyway, they'll do temporary. Uh, next up was the County Road forty-nine project, um, next item to do is the scoring and the stripe, permanent stripe and the markers. Uh, as far as the Maple, Maplesville caution lights on twenty-two, they've been put up. Uh, the Commission Office, unfortunately, they took the meter down a while back, and so the Commission Office has had, had to ask for another account for another meter to run the lights, so we're waiting on that. Uh, County Road sixteen LRSI project for guard rail at the four, four different sites, still working on the plans. And the bigger project, the County Road sixteen FDR, uh, project, we have a, uh, pre-construction meeting on that Wednesday, and we should know more about the, uh, how the, the contractor plans to schedule their work. And, uh, just a, another little small project on, uh, County Road five twenty, there's a, a pipeline crossing and the, the, uh, uh, pipeline, Williams Pipeline doesn't want us to blade over it, so, uh, they made a proposal for us to pave it with, with project reimbursements, so we hope to do that paving on Wednesday, on, over the, the line.
I got a question.
You missed that part.
Five fourteen, five fourteen's got that same sign on it when I rode that road looking last week. Now, they tell us we can't do anything whatsoever with a blade on that road.
Believe that's what the sign says.
You can't cross where the pipeline crosses with a blade there.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking, so how, how are we gonna keep the road up, my question? I, I was at one of those meetings and I didn't realize it till I left meeting with Williams Pipeline that that was the case.
You can do everything on the road except where the line crosses.
I know, I know, but who's gonna keep up that signal, that's a bad road.
I get that, I, I get that complaint on, and I don't know the road number right offhand, but the one where you just passed twenty-two and you turned left.
That's five fourteen.
All right, that one, okay, so that's the same road I get calls on. So we, we, we run into that on a couple of different roads.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to Williams, I'm gonna ask him about that, because that, I knew when I did some nose work around the pipeline, I could back my machine across it, but I couldn't do any work on it. And that, that just does not make any sense that we can't fix our road. They have a right of way, we have a road, that's ours. Anyway, they have their rule.
Let's see if they can pave that too.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Yeah.
Paved the whole road.
Yeah, they didn't worry about fixing it.
We got two or three more, one ninety-nine, I think.
Yeah, I, I can help.
Yeah.
All right, and, uh, we, we were able to reconstruct and chip seal a portion of forty-three and still working on the other section that we had budgeted for. And, uh, that's our main projects we got going on right now, uh, still, I'm pretty much hauling all the rock to the, uh, the tower sites. And, uh, in the middle of hauling all the rock to the, uh, to the EMA building. Um, also on equipment, I just wanted to bring up, uh, I think that we discussed a wheeled excavator last time. Um, we have got a detailed, uh, quote for Sourcewell, um, from, uh, Warrior Equipment for a, uh, a John Deere wheeled excavator. And, uh, I think we're gonna meet with Cowan to get, uh, another, uh, option for a wheeled excavator. And we've looked for a used one and, uh, also talked to, I think Caterpillar, so we're still working on trying to find a solution for a good wheeled excavator that'll meet the county's needs. And, uh, any questions?
Yo, you got a schedule on the EMA building about spreading or? I know you got it, the rocks there, but are you planning on spreading it?
I should be able to get you an update tomorrow.
Okay, no worries.
I'll get you an update.
It was piled up everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, it'll look pretty when it's spread out, and we're just right the road from it, so we got, we got a machine, we'll send it that way. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Heath. All right, Commission Report, Commissioner Billingsley?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner Bone's not here and he asked me to take his, uh, go ask for resolutions to ask for bids on building UTV slash ATV trails on a newly purchased property at Manuka Park. Any questions? Okay.
I, I got one.
All right.
Well, I bet there's two in there, building, subbing out and building the trails.
Yeah, we have, we have to, let me explain it real quick. So, this is on the property that was newly acquired, so it is federal grant money. We, at, one, under one of the initial plans with the partnership with the road department was to have them, um, help build out part of that on that hundred and sixty acres that's newly acquired, but the money cannot be spent in-house like that, so it has to be bid out.
You can't do any in-kind service.
So, we're currently.
New machine, we can't work on it.
Oh, no, no, we're using that, that's, that's used every, that's used every week. Yeah, the trails are looking real good.
Oh, no.
It will be, it will be not used for the development of them, but it will be used for the maintenance of them.
Grant money, grant money requires it to be contracted. It does not allow for any in-kind. Only thing we can do is provide a match, matching money. Which don't make any sense. Maybe we can get that changed.
So, that's the, that's the explanation.
Any other questions on that? All right, Commissioner Childers.
Yes, sir. Have, uh, you'll see on the agenda, it's for private family cemetery. Uh, this was new to me, so I had to research how we would be involved and, and, uh, how the family could get this arranged. Uh, evidently, the commissions have done this before, so in your binder, you would see this, this document. The first, uh, five bullet points is something that the family would have had to do to get it to us. And, uh, just, uh, for the, uh, for the public, I'll let them know, it's, you must have a survey completed first, surveying the portion that will contain the cemetery. Deed must be done based on that survey. Did the end to the cemetery's name. Perk test of that portion must be completed and passed. You will take the deed and perk test and record in the probate office. You will call the county commission and request to be on the agenda. And, uh, the V C family has, uh, accomplished all those and it's before us to approve, and I'll be asking for that tomorrow night.
Okay.
The coroner comes up next, so the, the, uh, V C family will have to, uh, once we approve it, they'll be, they'll take a, a copy of the resolution to the coroner and, uh, and to the funeral homes. So that they'll be able to, uh, uh, bury their loved ones on their cemetery.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Hall?
No items.
Commissioner Hedley?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to County Road Three Eighty-seven.
Three Eighty-seven.
Three Eighty-seven is not closed, hallway through. There's a gate on the left, on the north and south end of Three Eighty-seven. It's closed to the gate. The county's supposed to keep the road worked and maintained to the gate, so.
To the gate.
That, that's, that's where it was closed from gate to gate.
Yeah, by, by law, you can't even do that.
It was done correctly by law, I'm just telling you.
Well, I, okay, we'll, we'll let it agree to disagree, how about that?
Garbage dump before then.
Oh, I can understand how that works, uh, but according to the way I interpreted or way I was told, that every, every resident on the road, every, every.
The law has changed, it wasn't that way back then. But everybody on that road was sent, uh, information that was gonna be closed, it was, the signs was posted on the road where there's gonna be closed. They had a hearing at the, at the county commission office when it was upstairs, or was that it? So, it was closed legally, but now you can do whatever you want to. If you wanna open it back up, I'm good with that. But if you open it back up, I'd like to see it assed, but I'm not just opening it up and trash.
Well, that's gonna depend on what, what he finds, if it was legal or not. If it was legal, then it's closed. I mean, if it was closed legally, it's closed. We had to go through the same process to reopen it, so, uh, we'll see what he finds out. You got a task. Okay, uh, anything else? Commissioner Hedley? Commissioner Perkins?
Uh, uh, yeah, I can just give a brief update real fast on, uh, Manuka. It is brief, uh, cause of, so, uh, several months ago, the commission had, uh, passed a resolution where we're gonna add a, uh, general store up at Manuka. And I'm happy to report that, um, we should have that operational come Saturday morning for the, that, uh, uh, activities that we have going on. I invite everybody out to that. But, uh, we've, uh, got the inventory in, done a lot of, lot of work up there, uh, added all the gondolas and got it stocked up pretty good, and I think our final run to get some of the last little bit of inventory and get it plugged in the system uh, will be done Friday. So, uh, it should be, uh, operational come Saturday, everybody be able to, uh, come up there. And I know the campers and, and the riders and everything will have a place to get, uh, cold drink, uh, fishing supplies, camping supplies. There's R V supplies in it, so it's, um, it's been, it's been looking good, so I appreciate it.
Thing's gonna be a really good addition up there. You and Commissioner Bone, the Giles family, done a good job up there. All right, anything else?
That's all.
Okay, I'm gonna be asking for a resolution tomorrow night to approve the job description for license inspector and to post the job and fill it. It's a revenue license inspector.
Are we discussing that now?
Yeah.
I'm in opposition to having it be mandatory A post, sort of, A post certified.
It, that shouldn't be mandatory. That, that should be, uh, that should be a plus.
Let me real quick refer to this under education and experience. Alabama Peace Officer Standards and Training Certification is A post. It does not say re- um, recommended or anything else.
We may have pulled the wrong, uh,
All right, also.
That may have been the old one.
Also, other, other functions.
I think it's folks that preferred.
Yeah, should, if it says preferred, that's fine, and other, the un- other functions under makes rest needs to be removed.
This is, this is gonna be the, the old file.
All right, one, I need the new one.
Yeah, you do.
We do, 'cause expectations.
Thank you.
Good catch, but.
No, I'm, I'm sort of opposed to a building, uh, to an inspector, licensed inspector regardless where he's A post or not, that's just my stance on it. Most time licensed inspectors, uh, lead to zoning the next thing.
No, don't, don't even use that word.
This, this inspector's gonna be pulling, uh, the, uh, checking businesses and seeing if they've got their license, if they're paying sales tax. We've got a lot, that's, that's gonna be his main focus, not going ahead and checking anything else.
Don't we not have somebody that's a third party that's, uh, being sure that their sales tax and stuff is paid now?
They're not checking to see if they have a business license. That's what we got. We've got, we've got businesses operating that's not even registered by the license and paying sales tax. That, that's, that's the purpose of this. Because we've, we got to fit, do some, running some numbers. If he does his job within a couple of years, he'll be paying his salary. We won't be taking anything out of budget paying salary, or her, their salary. Let's say it that way.
Any, any business that runs, it's selling stuff, uh, they have to pay sales tax. To the state and to the county, well, they don't have to pay.
Only, only if somebody knows it. We've got, we've had businesses operating in this county that nobody ever asked a question. They never paid any sales tax. And it's not fair to other businesses.
Or they sell something?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, when asked, yeah, oh, yeah, we sell, where, how you, who's, who you paying your taxes to? Well, I'm not paying any. Collecting it, but you ain't paying it. That, that's, that's the reason for this. And, you know, could be wrong, may not be that many, but I think there is.
Those other, um, and I may have voted on it, shame on me. So, other, other, um, counties have this ins- this inspector specifically, just, who did we pattern this one after? I wanna see.
Uh, Shelby, wasn't it?
Well, the, the.
About every one of them.
O file, O file was created by the previous commission. And then, uh, we pulled, uh, uh, a couple of, uh, similar jobs from Shelby County.
Shelby.
And used two or three different, uh, bullet points from their job description and added to ours. Uh, and Commissioner Perkins has already caught that one of the things that we definitely changed is it does not have to be A post. And so, we used the word preferred there and preferred somewhere else. I, I mean, this has been a couple of months since we put this thing together.
At a degree, we put down, I think you added it's a plus, not preferred is a plus.
Shouldn't be standard mandatory.
Well, we'll get the, uh, we'll get the correct, uh, job description.
I don't recall seeing this, and if we did, y'all.
No, we, this is what we're, go pass tomorrow night.
Yeah, this has not been.
Okay, 'cause, um,
We haven't had a work session or anything on it, and we're gonna pass tomorrow night.
I can't, I, 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 I just.
That's what we're here doing tonight.
Well, but I don't, I have to admit, I, it's gonna give me twenty-four hours to look around, check, see. I just feel like in the best interest, and we, and we work together well. If we, give us time, if, if, I would like to see it, and I'm sure I trust your judgment, but I'd like to be in the knowing.
That is, that is not a problem. I don't, I don't think anybody up here that's.
And, and we voted on it, we voted on.
Time to get the right one.
Now, we vote, we voted on the budget that included.
The budget included the.
For the inspector, we have not voted on the job description.
Correct.
But with, the description was put together as we were putting, was tweaked as we were building the budget.
Part of, when we were going through the budget and putting numbers down, we had other counties what they were paying these people and figuring that into the budget, and at the same time, we had their job descriptions and going through it and just got the wrong one.
Well, you know, as I'm always told to be a good steward over county monies, for anything that we all commissioners need to be aware of what's put before us, and I trust you all to do it, but when you come creating a position or things of this magnitude, so going forward, if we can say, hey, we, we wanna add this in times of essence, but we do need to consider each other's, um, and, and I do appreciate the fact that we do need to table it, let us review it, and just for the general public, so we all be aware, because I can just throw anything anytime.
Well, I, well, I posted that.
Now, I'm gonna hold myself accountable for not reading the budget line for line and, you know, slipping up on me, but.
I mean, that, all that was, was just putting the money in there for when you decided to do it, so that wasn't, you, I ain't gonna say you missed anything, but.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but next time, give us time to hash over, because a meeting was before this meeting with this, so we all, I should have been aware. And I don't know who else wasn't, and, and as it was on there, and I was thinking, the license inspector, what's he gonna do downstairs? Who does the license? Okay, so that's, that's my ignorance now, I'm just gonna tell you that. I saw it, but I didn't know it was this.
We'll take that off tomorrow night, we'll put it on our next meeting, give everybody a couple of weeks to look at it.
And maybe a good person be hired, won't they pretty much work through, uh, Tim Little's office?
No, they work, no, no, they'll work under Miss Sylvia.
They'll answer to the commission, but they'll, they'll be housed in, in Tim's office because they'll be, need to be working with his software and, uh, and, uh, recording the taxes and the, and the fees and.
They'll talk to Tim?
Not until we, not until we prove this.
You might wanna talk to him.
Well, he'll just be housed there.
All, all he's gonna do is pass information on. It ain't gonna be.
He's not, he's not answering to Tim. He'll be answering to us, it's, it's just at his spot. We, we did speak with the, uh, assistant over there, so.
I had a question.
All right.
Would he also be checking mobile home tags?
They said it in the mobile.
Check mobile home, uh, registrations.
Yeah.
I don't really, that hasn't been enforced, has it, to the, I mean, has it really?
That's one of my point is, last count roughly, we had on that estimate, is about eleven hundred pay it every year, and there's about over eight thousand mobile homes in the county.
There's, yeah, that's probably true, could be true.
Oh, it's, it is true.
They don't know, yeah.
So, and they're not paying them, you have about seven thousand that's not paying. You don't, it seems like a lot when you start riding this county and counting mobile homes.
Well, I tell you, between now and our next meeting, make sure everybody reads it good. You got any notes, let's beat this thing to death at our next work session, so we decide what we want in it.
Bring you up to a speed.
Well, I think I've got the, uh, uh, the current one on my laptop. I'll email everybody tonight. Not that we'll have it tomorrow night, but I'll, I'll, I'll email everybody when I get home.
Thank you. I, I appreciate it, guys.
All right, good points. Okay, uh, taking that off. County, County Road Sixteen property, we're going to, uh, I'm asking for a resolution to, uh, to pu- pull the sale of that for the time being. We've got a little issues gotta be worked out, and we need to do so to make our, it's the budget.
And would you follow up with Mr. Maams?
Oh, I'm going to.
Do you want this off the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the license inspector off the agenda, please, sorry.
I'm talking about County Road Sixteen.
Uh, no, we let, we let have a resolution tomorrow night to, to rescind the sale. Everybody understands, that's a bookkeep, it's a bookkeeping thing, end of the year, it's.
Discretion between the amount of property, I think, Joe, is that not correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, the auditor, auditor looks at it, so it's not a problem. And I'm gonna look into what the, uh, what the issue that came up with property, and I'd rather say that, tell you all later. Okay, uh, I was approached, about a couple of months ago, I guess, first time by Derek Scott. State of Alabama allows each county to set up an authority for cemetery rehab. And some of the cemeteries I've seen, I don't know that I'd want even step foot in there. But Derek has agreed to head this up, and he's got several volunteers, so Derek, if you'll come forward and explain this, so everybody, uh, will understand it.
Well, Derek, I'm, Scott, I'm the current, uh, president of Historical Society, and that's sort of how I got involved with this. And it's, it is for a resolution, uh, to establish the Chilton County Cemetery Rehabilitation Authority. And, uh, basically, the, uh, I, I guess you all have a copy of,
Yes.
of this. It's, it's pretty much follows right down the way the law is written. And, uh, and Madison County has one that's pretty active that I, I talk to them a lot about theirs. And it, um, it'll have several responsibilities. The first is to get all the old, uh, all the cemeteries, um, listed in the, um, state Alabama Historical Commission list they have. And it, it's, the way the law is written, this would be for county cemeteries, not within city limits. They would have to establish their own authority, so this would be the ones in the county. And, and we, we could help them do it, but, uh, it's, it's, getting it listed is not too hard, but you have to write a little page to say how, uh, describe the cemetery. And the way it's written is has five board members appointed by the commission. And, um, they would make all the decisions to, within the authority, and open membership to anybody else that wants to participate, but they wouldn't have voting.
And I think you already have five who've agreed to.
I have five or six, yeah, I have five that we can, uh, I can provide names tomorrow, if you wanna do it tomorrow, we can do that.
Well, uh, my, if, if the commission agrees to set up this authority, there's no money involved. It's free. They, they're volunteers.
Right, it's written to allow them, the authority to handle money.
Yeah.
Uh, donations and such for, um.
But it's no county funds.
No county funds required.
Uh, if we agree to do this, I would like to ask to suspend the rules tomorrow night and go in and point the five he's got before they change their mind.
October's coming.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I, oh, you know, I think being it's, it's a new board now, and we ain't checked, I, I, I don't know that you'd wanna suspend the rules and do that till, 'cause you know, you may have somebody else that wants, that, that wants to do it too. I, I'd say at least we leave it open till the next meeting to where somebody, if somebody here wants to nominate somebody, you know, just courtesy.
Well, that's, that's fine.
Well, and I made five board members. The Madison County has seven board members. I didn't know if we'd be able to get five, so.
That's why I'm saying.
And we might not, but I think it'd just be, you know, you're not, somebody listening to here to make say, hey, man, you know, I'd like to be on that thing, I, you know, just.
That would be good. That'd be good too.
Okay.
And I know you'd like all the help.
You might wanna raise it to seven instead of five.
We can do that, yeah.
I couldn't wait the other day when he told me he had six or seven already volunteered, ready, just chomping a bit to go to work to go clean out a cemetery.
Hey, that's some people's thing.
Yeah, it is. Okay, all right, any questions for? Okay, all right, any questions for him? All right, appreciate it, Derek.
Thank you, Derek.
Uh, and I have, uh, reimbursement for some damages for Commissioner Bone, we'll approve tomorrow night on invoice. Uh, and before we leave, I'd like to, uh, say, we've had three town halls, and the last two couldn't have been any better. It was a packed house at Vermina's Fellowship Hall Thursday night. And we had some really good questions, it went over really good, nobody got in a fight, nobody got mad. I don't know whether everybody left happy or not, but it was a good meeting, just like the one at Maplesville and one at Jimmison. Right now, I'm working on Isabella should be next, and then Thorsby. Uh, I didn't get a call this afternoon, I'm gonna call him when I get home about the, the date and, uh, place at Isabella. Then Thorsby, Commissioner Childers is working on that, he's just waiting on me to confirm Isabella's date, and we'll set that one up. All right, if all minds are satisfied, we'll be through with this work session tomorrow night at six thirty, our regular meeting.